Call the special meeting at five o'clock. Go ahead and call it to order. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
All right, moved by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, meeting's approved. We'll go ahead and call for mayor's report.
Mr. Count, Mr. President, no report.
Okay, council reports?
No report.
Mr. Gines?
No.
Ms. Newman?
No.
Okay, Mr. Demme?
Nothing.
Mr. Barrett? Any report? I have no report. We'll go ahead and go to the public comments section. We have a total of forty-five minutes. Each person has three minutes. We're going to change it up a little bit today. You'll come up here, sign in with your name, state your name and address. When you hear the bell, that's a, you've got thirty seconds left on your time when you hear the bell ring. So we'll go ahead and begin. Anyone on my left, your right? There being no one, anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Public comments is now closed. We'll go ahead and move to the...
Yeah, boy.
Yes, sir. We'll go ahead and make that exception. I should have spoke louder.
It's right there, right on the thing. We'll pass it, you'll pass it, yeah.
My name is Jerry Harper, I'm from Biloxi, Mississippi. And I have some comments regarding the, basically, occupancy or codes that you're discussing right now. Sort of a prelude, in my opinion, Mississippi legislature was premature passing this act, and substantive changes should be expected in the near future. I think the public shall shortly discover that a state that's been unable to manage the operations of its liquor warehouse for a half a century is also incapable of monitoring and enforcing a program for a product is ill-defined. Questionable in its effectiveness is medical marijuana. For example, recent news item cited a new medical marijuana product that seemed to be basically a pedophile laced with marijuana tar products. Personally don't see this as a medicine, but what this meeting is about, that's what this meeting is about. However, let me go to five code proposals that I think you need to consider. The first is that any changes made to the zoning code should be made as temporary changes and be expected to be revised or eliminated in twelve months. This is a highly uncertain environment. Specters should, investors and developers should not expect any certainty at this thing, point in time, and the public's safety and well-being should be paramount. Second, the wards in what I call the Biloxi gaming, gambling and entertainment areas should be excluded from any type of development associated with the Marijuana Act. The Marijuana Act and its dispensaries, development facilities, growing facilities is incompatible with the uses in this one area, and that would include, basically, wards one, two, three, four, and part of four, everything south of the Back Bay. And I think that should just be a blanket exclusion. We're not going to have any marijuana facilities there. Number three, the city has to consider other things than how far from the building. They need to consider the use of combustible marijuana. There's no difference in that than smoking, and the byproducts are much more dangerous, particularly to children. Marijuana is not a healthful or a beneficial product. It can drastically affect personality changes, particularly in growing children. And serious discussion needs to be given to how a neighbor, okay, who has people smoking marijuana in their backyard can protect their children, or how you can be in an apartment house and not be affected by it. All these factors enter into it. The fourth one is that the occupancy codes need to address...
Sir, your time is up.
Need to provide specific legal redress for residents against...
Sir, your time is up. We do have the rest of it, we certainly will read it. And what was your name and address again?
Jerry Harper, Biloxi, Mississippi.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comments. If the clerk would read the topic that we're going to discuss today.
Ordinance to amend text within the land development ordinance to introduce and define medical cannabis.
Okay, that was moved by Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Tisdale is unavailable today, so Mr. Gines, opening remarks.
Yeah, just wanted to, we wanted to get understanding of this, so Peter, if you give us a little overview.
The current status where we are with the, with the state who is charged with, basically, ninety-five percent of all the regulations regarding this, their regulations are still out and awaiting comment from different people, and they're waiting for the final regulations. The main part of the state statute that talks about what powers cities have, or municipalities, or counties, there's an opt-out period that was put into place. That opt-out time has passed. The city did not opt out, but it talks about the city has the right to make zoning regulations and make decisions on where cannabis-related activities can be located. And then in the same sentence, it talks about, however, it cannot discriminate against these businesses when compared to other businesses. So we have some power in zoning these, their commercial activities. We have some power, but we can't zone out, or can't single out something to say, for example, one of these gentleman's points was, we can't have, we shouldn't have them in any waterfront districts. While that is really more of a decision for the legislature to make, the city council really could not say, "We're not allowing these in any waterfront-type districts or certain commercial districts because similar businesses are allowed to locate in that sort of business." So we're trying to establish, what sort of business is this, and what other business do we already have that closely resembles this? It is medical marijuana. The persons going in have to have a medical marijuana card that will be in the form of a prescription from a doctor for whatever their condition is. And the closest thing in meeting with Jerry's staff we had was a pharmacy. And in certain areas in the cities, certain commercial districts, a pharmacy can be opened as a matter of right, and in some commercial districts, such as limited business, it is still a conditional use to open a pharmacy. We also have, in our code, a separate category for drive-through pharmacies or non-drive-through pharmacies. The statutes here are clear that you can't have a drive-through dispensary. So we are just going with a standalone, non-drive-through pharmacy and trying to replicate the same commercial zoning requirements for those throughout the city. That's the only way we can be nondiscriminatory. We can't, we can't say this, we're going to allow it only in CB and not NB, commercial business or neighborhood business, when, for example, a pharmacy is allowed by right in either of those districts. The legislature passed other restrictions in the statutes is that any dispensary must be fifteen hundred feet from a church, fifteen hundred feet from a daycare, fifteen hundred feet from a school. So we've added that into our ordinances.
So I guess you're saying it's something like the alcohol, we're adopting our policies around, like, a liquor store cannot be so close to a school or something in that area?
Right. If we didn't do anything, if we just said, they can, if we made no regulations at all, then any dispensary could open in any commercial district. Any cultivation store or warehouse could open in any commercial district. You have some limited business areas that are very light business, more like offices, certainly not anything even like a pharmacy, and a warehouse, cultivation warehouse, could just open up there because it is commercial. And I think one of the tweaks that has been made since the last meeting, and Jerry can speak to this, is that we put cultivation-type warehouse or distribution warehouse, putting that more into an industrial-type zone. And the growing facilities would be in, I think, agricultural or industrial. I believe that's right. So this is the power we have now, is to state where these businesses could be located. The statute also says, in this business, it has to be secure, adequate security, and it's the only thing sold in this store. So we can't require that this be allowed in a normal pharmacy. There's no mechanism for that in our state statute. They're still coming out with different regulations, where they're interpreting how the statutes are going to be. I can see there's going to be some arguments both ways about, what about an existing CBD store? Can it divide itself in half and have a dispensary on one side or the other? But as far as the zoning, when you look at, say, a Long Pass Road, if you put a fifteen hundred-foot circle around a church and a school and a daycare, a lot of road is, is not going to be, is not even a valid site. Those distances can be waived and cut in half if the church or school or daycare agrees. It can be cut to five hundred feet. The other thing it states in there, too, is that when someone has one in place, sort of plants a flag there, there can be no other dispensary in a fifteen hundred-foot circle around that. And so that's going to also limit the amount of, you know, when you say somebody looking for a place, it's got to be the right commercial district, it's got to be fifteen hundred feet from a school, daycare, or church, and it can't be within fifteen hundred feet, or maybe a thousand feet, of another, of another dispensary.
You used the word, and this will be my last one, you used the word pharmacy, and to my knowledge, in the traditional pharmacy that we consider a pharmacy, because it hadn't been federalized, we can't put it in our traditional pharmacies here. So they have to open up a pharmacy, a standalone pharmacy strictly for that. Am I correct in that area?
That's right. It's also a cash business. When you go in, you have to pay cash because it's not, or some banks don't allow it. But the DOR, I think, is going to be regulating that. I think the, I guess the other part of it, of what this gentleman mentioned, I mean, I think the part about the smoke on the streets, I think that is something we could, we could look at along, really, in our normal code of ordinances about under an innocent sort of thing, because if you've been in large cities, you know, that can be pretty apparent in some areas, people openly smoking on the streets and things like that. That's not really within what we're trying to deal with today as far as doing our zoning, what we can do with zoning.
Okay.
You good?
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Couple questions. They said in the law that the state has to be grown in a state, and it's going to probably take a year before you can ever really sell anything or fill anything, because it has to be grown in a state through sale in the state of Mississippi.
Right.
So I don't know if anybody's even started that. Do you know?
Nobody's gotten a permit yet, and the permits wouldn't start until July. It has to be grown indoors, in a controlled sort of environment. I've also heard that, you know, the time delay for issuing these medical cards are going to be fairly slow because the state is going to be taking applications from people to apply and get a card. So I know there are permits, people are, have started their permit applications, are getting in line to file their stores and their, but that's a good point about how long it would take to actually get it growing and all that, so we may not see any real sales or anybody up and running until towards the end of the year.
That's what I was just saying, I was looking at everything right now, we're trying to set it up, and I guess we've pretty much limited what we can do, as you said, with the state.
Yes.
There's only certain things the city can actually do. And if you have warehouses that grow it, they can dispense it. And when you dispense the medical marijuana to a card, that just could be someone documented through the state of Mississippi. Because, like you said, we're pretty much out of the pharmacies, they can't, they really can't fill a prescription.
Right.
So I mean, how are we going to handle that, this is supposed to be medical marijuana, and they have a card, so that they get the card from the state, they get the card from the doctor, they have to have it from both of them?
They'll get the card from the state, and then the doctor will have to, he can write a prescription based on if they fall into the types of diseases that allow for him to write a prescription. There's the typical glaucoma, and I guess the nervousness and things like that, but one of the categories is chronic pain, and so that probably will be a, a lot of the medical cards will probably be, could be based on that, somebody having chronic pain issues.
Chronic pain is the main one that they use it for, but, you know, they can use it for macular degeneration, they can use it for Parkinson's. I mean, it has a purpose, and that's why most people probably voted and passed it, because a lot of people really legally need that it helps them, just like any other drug you have. Some, a lot of them are bad drugs, and you can abuse anything, what I'm just saying. But my thing with you is, exactly what are you looking for from the council that we can actually do, vote on or not vote on? I mean, it could, it's going to be, listen, all this stuff, it's pretty limited what we can actually do, the city.
Yeah, what we're looking to do is to add to our LDO, we have use tables in our LDOs, so when somebody comes in a year or two down the road and wants to open something, whether it be a pharmacy, whatever, they look in the book under that use table, and they look at all the zoning categories, and they see, is it permitted by right, or is it a conditional use, and is this an area where we can do this? And so it's to allow for a reasonable degree of regulation, really about all we can do. Otherwise, they could just set up in any district, any type, and we have no say-so in it.
So like with the main thing y'all looking for to put in place, say, immediately? Is there anything in particular y'all looking to put in place now? Is there anything we could have to look at further down the road? Like you said, this thing's going to change constantly, it's brand-new. We don't, nobody really knows throughout the state how to handle some of these things or not. And it's just like us, it's all brand-new to us, so that's why I called for this here, so you could maybe explain some of this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because the state law, you can't really, too much about that. So if you're going to any four or five things that we can actually do or look at, that's what we need to look at.
Yeah, once, once these use tables are put into place, then I think, this coming July is when the regulations start to take effect. So if we have our use tables in place, then anybody setting this up in the city would have to put it in the places that y'all are voting on.
And everything has to be grown inside?
Yes, sir.
That one of the regulations?
Yes.
And the people that grow it could actually dispense it in front of the, say, the warehouse? Have a front section?
I don't, I'm not sure about that. I don't think so.
See, I thought they could, I thought they could, the people that grow it could dispense it. As I said, that's just something to think, we're trying to find out to make sure.
They probably would need two permits if they were doing that, and they might need a standalone-type business if they were out in, in an area where everything fit for them. It's possible they could get two different permits and do that, but I haven't looked into that detail yet.
See, I know the DEA does not recognize legal marijuana, so that's why you have the problem with the pharmacy filling the prescription.
Right.
Because it's actually illegal, so the DEA don't recognize it. The state pharmacy, they put some type of control on it, but then they're not going to fill the legal prescriptions, pretty much what you're doing. So that's the problem you have with a regular pharmacy. And is anything, like emergency rooms at hospitals, that have been brought up, can they do anything through the emergency rooms at the hospital?
I don't, I don't think that's been addressed. That may be something down the road, they may, they could always change any of this statute in the years to come, and that statute was about four hundred pages long, so I'm sure they'll be tweaking it as the years go on.
My biggest problem is that half the things, we can't really answer. We have to just kind of go through them.
Right.
And I said, that's, that's some of the problems I have with the whole thing, is just, you try to do the things right the first time, it's hard to do that.
Yeah.
You have no clue what's right. You know, that's my biggest problem. Yeah, it's supposed to be medical marijuana, but really nothing, other than a card, it's really medically death-worth. That's why I brought up the hospitals, or the nursing homes, or anybody that dispenses that. I mean, the same way with them, a lot of the older people, like the Parkinson's and that, they could use that. So I mean, I don't, that's, that's kind of a gray area right there, so I don't know exactly where you go with that, to make it right.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, you don't know, because we, nobody really knows. That's the problem.
No, I, no.
I have to question?
And all the permit fees, and there's a seven percent excise tax on top, and all these fees, we have a normal sales tax, all these extra fees go to the state, I presume, probably to pay for the people that are going to be trying to regulate this.
I don't know, all right, next?
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Demme?
Yeah. When I look at this ordinance, a couple of my clients have called me concerned about the definition of cannabis, and specifically, all parts of the plantis, of the genus cannabis, right? That includes hemp, CBD, everything else. And so they're concerned that the lack of the use of word "medical" in front of cannabis dispensary in the code would affect them, would impact them negatively, or could. So I would request, or let me ask your opinion on putting the word "medical" in front of the word "cannabis" in section, especially in section N regarding dispensaries, that it's medical cannabis dispensaries and people that intend to sell medical cannabis. You know, Walmart sells products with hemp and CBD in them. Those are all parts of the plant genus cannabis. That would restrict these companies from, from selling any of these products. And so using the term "medical" would refine this and restrict it only to the forms of cannabis meant to be used at the medical dispensaries.
You okay with that? It's fine?
And, Mr. Demme, when you said clients, this is your legal clients or your cannabis clients?
All clients.
Okay, I just, just wanted to clarify that.
We just have to talk about the property management, we just say you agree with the definition right out of the state law. Next is being proposed for the ordinance, that the state law says definitions and independent laws.
And we understand that, and we've discussed that with some of our state reps, and the response we get is, with regard to zoning, that's going to be left to the cities and the state, I mean, it's the cities and the local municipalities and counties and cities. So in their opinion, they won't enforce that, you will. So as long as we have the definition clear at the city level, we should be good.
And let me just mention one other thing. With this, we're already getting called out every day, you know, poison, how soon do I want to step out? What they gave for us is what's called a certificate of, or a letter, something complex, to be a part of their application to present, and part of the health, states show that the location, they investigate the location that they want to open this dispensary, and meets the distance requirements from those other entities like the school in charge of that, your sentence. That's typical, you know, the standard, whether, if we check this and doesn't apply.
So we can't do that. We can't issue that letter until, you know, Mr. Lawrence's question, until we actually have the text in our ordinance, I can't issue that letter to them to start their application process.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it, okay. Mr. Barrett? I have nothing. So...
I'd like, there's one more question to feed, Mr. President, if it's possible.
Go ahead.
You have cannabis, like Robert said, you have hemp, you know, and you have the THE, which is the one that people use the most, as far as the drug, that the purpose of it. All that be sold in one place?
I don't think so.
Can I address that real quick?
Yeah.
So the law specifically says, and let me see if I can find the language real quick for you, Mr. Lawrence, the law says that, space, research facility, disposal, cultivation, says, "An entity licensed and registered with the Mississippi Department of Revenue that acquires, possesses, stores, transfers, sells supplies or dispenses medical cannabis equipment used for medical cannabis or related supplies and educational materials or car holders." So the question about the hemp, the CBD, those things, that would depend on the state's definition of related supplies. I don't think that they intended that. I think that is more apparatuses used to consume medical cannabis, but again, there's no definition in this bill to define that term "related supplies."
So there's no answer yet.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Call for the question?
I have one more, one more comment up. So the legislators still, still, they still don't have it defined. Why we do, why should we do this at this point? Would be my question, my final question.
They, they passed the law, it just does not take effect until July 1st.
July 1st, so we, we just need to be ready.
We should, we should be in a position to have it voted on before July 1st.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gines. Anyone else?
She missed public comments, tell her to come back for the next public comment.
We've already had public comments, we'll have public comments in the next session, but we already had public comments for this, for this session.
I'd like, what?
At six o'clock, at six o'clock, we have another meeting, and there'll be a public comments section in that six o'clock meeting.
One, one quick question.
Mr. Lawrence?
Are y'all going to bring something back to us with suggestions, anything? Have y'all printed out anything that we go look at?
Yeah, we, we've had a...
Tell us the suggestions y'all planning on making.
I've made some notes on what he was talking about adding. And then I think we'd be ready for a second reading next, next week.
Peter, it looks as if they wrote this as a, as an ordinance to take, to take action on this sess, this, uh, this session. Should we, uh, vote to table this until the next meeting?
Is it on this agenda?
Yeah, this is, we've moved it for this second reading today, when we opened the special meeting.
Well,
Let me, I'm gonna make a-
Uh, let me just.
I think it would need to be here.
I mean, we don't have no clue what we vote on.
Really not, though, it's really the dispensary.
Really?
You know what I mean?
So, we don't have no clue what we vote on. I'm not gonna send some kind of, what we talked about, they changed already.
Why don't we just amend it and add those three? No, this is, this is a meeting, a special meeting to move this ordinance.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Deming, would you like to, uh, offer those amendments?
Yeah, I can do it.
If the council can, uh, give Mr. Deming, uh, some attention, he's gonna read three amendments that are being proposed by the administration. And if we adopt these, then we can actually vote on the measure after he, uh, reads his proposed amendments.
Will it have all the-
If he gets a second.
It'll have the changes and other thing in it that they suggested?
Yep.
And then we'll bring that to, well, next week, the week before, it really don't make any difference when you put it in action, because you're still a year out from everything.
Get it off the-
Can't really do anything, you know?
Listen, uh, why don't he read the amendments? If he gets a second, we'll move ahead. If he doesn't, and somebody wants a table, we'll go that route. But I think Mr. Deming intends to offer three amendments.
I do. I just, just keep stalling for me.
All right. So, what are we actually trying to do right now?
I'm, I'm moving to offer an amendment to, uh, to subsection N to add the term "medical" in front of the word "cannabis" with regard to every reference to dispensary. Just to clarify that this, these dispensaries are reserved for medical cannabis and not any other form of the, the plant genus cannabis.
And what did the state say about that? We can do that?
Well, this is, this is, our, our responsibility is to zone this. And so, we want, I wanna make sure that these zones are intentionally zoning for medical cannabis dispensaries.
Yeah, I think, I think the state's definition does say "medical cannabis." On the previous page of this, the state's definition that we took it from does say "medical cannabis." So, and the actual cannabis definition excludes those types of, uh, byproducts in the last sentence. But I think that's fine to make it clear that we're copying the medical, we're calling it "medical cannabis dispensary." Because really, a, a pure cannabis dispensary i- is probably technically still not legal.
Correct. So, um, so I'll offer that, that amendment if I have a second.
All right. That's a proposed amendment by Mr. Deming. It was seconded by Ms. Newman. All in favor of the amendment? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Is that any other amendments, or is that it?
I think you, you added it.
Okay.
It's, it's on there.
All right, now we'll, uh, vote on the ordinance as amended. All in favor? Those opposed?
Wait, wait a minute. You voting to pass this?
Yes.
And we hadn't even read none of this?
Yeah, I, I've read it.
We hadn't seen it, we didn't change it. That's what we had the workshop for, so we could look at everything. So, we don't even get to read it?
It's been here for three weeks.
Yeah, we've, we've added information. So, uh, the vote again, all, all in favor so she can record them duly?
I can't vote if I hadn't seen anything.
Okay, all opposed?
I'm opposed to that. I mean, I like to be able to look at something.
Five to one, am I correct? Five to one?
I don't know.
All right, motion passes. Chair entertain a, uh, motion to adjourn this meeting, special meeting. Mr. Barrett, all right. All right, Mr. Guines, do I have a second? Mr. Barrett, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll reconvene at, uh, six o'clock for a, uh, public hearing.